Special joint work session. Manistee City Council, Manistee County Commissioners did not call for order. Work session items. We have public, we have presentation by the Manistee Area Chamber of Commerce on the proposed economic development services. At this time, we're holding the floor to, do you have any public comments? Did not, or chair not, and myself speak.
This is probably the only kind of publicist to speak, right?
Yes.
So, I guess I'll speak.
Please state your name and address.
My name is Jim Matthews. I live at 334 River Street. And I've been, I've been in Manistee now, I think I've been a resident about three years, and I've been in and out of here since in the last five or six. And I used to come here as a kid, so I got a long history with the place. So what I wanted to, what I really wanted to bring up is I understand there's going to be also discussion of AES and consulting agreements that the city has. And I just wanted to just, just share a little bit of perspective. Just before, I only get five minutes, how many, five minutes do I get, or I get less? Less than that, whatever. I need to introduce myself. I've been 40 years in IT. I spent three years as the Chief Information Officer for the state of Illinois. I had a budget of $700 million. I had 700 employees. And, and then I ran all the IT for Charter Communications and took them out of bankruptcy from being in bankruptcy to where they issued their stock at 35 bucks. When I left, their stock was over 200, now their stock has been actually over 400. And it's all through managing these large organizations effectively, dealing with consultants constantly, dealing with budgets, dealing with accountability. And my, my gripe is that I've, I've been here and I've been to many visioning sessions, and I've not seen one of them come out with an actionable plan that actually has somebody accountable for it, measures the results, and, and, and does something about the effectiveness or lack of effectiveness of the initiatives that have been proposed. I've, I've been to at least four visioning sessions. And most of the time, most of the time, we talk about things that are what we'd like to have in the town, but what the town really seems to lack, from my perspective, again, I told you where I spent my life working, and, well, not where I lived, I lived in Chicago, I lived in St. Louis, but what's missing is a real economy. So to bring some, but something here that's actually going to create the jobs that are going to let the young people work and give people some, a little more diversity of career and some retention in the area. And, and so, you know, to me, low-income housing, housing's not the, not, not the answer, but those are the kind of plans that have been coming from our consultants is low-income housing. How do we get some government money in here, make a couple contractors rich, and, and attract low-income tenants, and, and draw from the tax, draw from the tax base? So that's not, that's not economic progress, that's not economic success. So economic success is when you're actually putting points on the board, you're actually building an economy, you're building jobs for people, you're, you're building an economy that, that can afford the things that people would like to have. We were blessed with a lot of nature here, but the kind of other, you know, things that people propose and would like to see, it's not so much. So there's opportunity, a lot of opportunity, but it needs to be done a certain way. And, and so, what, what I'd like to see is when we have consultants involved, we actually get an actionable plan, and we have a model that we follow. I know there's ordinance and things that are like principles for operation, but we're in the last, the last go-around we've had on one of the projects, we actually threw our principles out. We had an ordinance that set a limit on what a pilot could be, well, we just killed that. So we took away one of the, one of the principles that was in place that would help add some normalcy to a process where you're going to actually make a decision. And so if you don't have the principles and the, and the guidelines in place, you make arbitrary decisions based on emotional factors that, how you feel today, or what kind of result you think you're going to get. That's how decisions are made, unless you have documented principles and guidelines about how, when you're in the employ of the city, you're to make a decision. And I, I don't see it, I don't see it done. There's a, there's a principle used, it comes out of, out of business school, I suppose, called a RACI model, I don't know if people, some people are probably familiar with it. And, and believe me, I've met a lot of people around here that have been more personally successful than I have, but I'm just saying mine was just hard work and we, you know, but, but we had measurable success for an organization. That's what we need here, is measurable, measurable success for the organization that is the city of Manistee. So with this RACI model, there's an identification of somebody that's responsible for the task that you're trying to perform, somebody that's actually accountable, that means their job's on the line if the person responsible doesn't deal with it, somebody that's consulted if there's an issue, and somebody that needs to be informed that things are on track. So that's RACI, our ACI. So, so who's responsible, I think are the, are the different departments within the city. So, so the different department, the Public Works, whatever, those departments are the ones that actually do the work, right? And they're, and they're accountable to, I think, the city manager, and the CFO, maybe the attorney, I mean, those, that level, that's, they're, they're kind of accountable. And the city council is consulted. They would be consulted on things.
Their clients.
Okay. And then informed, that guy right there, he needs to be informed of the status of all this, so he can make sure this is going on. So I would like to see that we actually, if we do any visioning, if we do any, manage any consultants, have any consultants, we manage them, we have principles, we have, and we, we get results, not just keep doing the same exercise over and over again. Thanks.
Are there any other people present at the microphone? Steve?
Yes.
Good evening, everyone. Glenn Zering, 321 Fifth Street. Manon Nakshi, Kiniguaia, Aaron. 14 years ago, when I came to Manistee, I was handed, and working for government, I was handed at least two envisioning or visioning studies about our area that had been accomplished prior to my arrival. Since that time, I've personally participated in envisioning Manistee and a number of other issues and studies to try and figure out what we want to do. I'm going to have to echo Mr. Matthews here. Let's stop studying, let's start doing something. We need to move forward. We do not have an unlimited amount of time in which to make some decisions, and positive decisions for our county and our community. This is one of those type of situations where it's necessary to bite the bullet, to use the phrase, and let's pick a direction and let's go there. You can study to death, and having worked as a consultant and as a contractor over the years, I'm well aware of some of the beauties and also some of the fallacies of using and depending upon consultants. Too many of the ones I used to work with were in business to get the next consulting contract. Deliverables. Spell out what needs to be accomplished, help them get there, and help your community to get there. And if they cannot reach those, then maybe we need somebody else. So I just ask for your action and understanding there. Thank you.
Are there any other people to speak?
Good evening, everyone. I'm Kelly Smith, President Baker College Cadillac, and I represent, as the Board Chair of AES. And I just wanted to introduce Lisa Leedy, who is our potential candidate for Executive Director position at AES. And I'm not going to let her share all of the things she's done, because we just had a nice meet and greet, and some of you were there. And so I think she brings a lot to the table, even addresses some of the issues that the first two gentlemen talked about, but I look forward to her coming on board and working collectively with the DDA, with the chamber, and herself. And I truly believe that the three of them working together can take this community to the next level. So I'm very excited about that, and I just wanted to introduce her to you. Thank you.
I'm Lisa Leedy, and I think some of you I talked to at the meet and greet, and I appreciate your taking time to come and meet me. I have been a business owner for 15 years, I've served as an elected official, and I've been an appointed official in various different authorities and village and township capacities. So I have a fair amount of government experience. I've also been on chamber boards, DDA boards, I have a lot of experience helping groups re-strategize to get in a new vision and to kind of get a new direction. So I think I can bring something to the table to help bring all of you together, because I think economic development works best when done by everyone collaboratively with the DDA, the chamber, the municipalities, all working together. And I think I sound like I'm beating the dead horse on that one, because I preach that. It's worked well in other communities that I've been in. But I think that, as the gentleman before us spoke, I think identifying some goals and some deliverables and things like that, so that it's identified what is being accomplished and what you're getting for your funding is probably key. And I think the communication needs to be more regular and more consistent with different groups, if you're hiring a firm to do something for you. So I'm looking forward to the opportunity and hope to have the chance to work with all of you. Thanks.
Yes.
Good evening. My name's Terry Walker, I live in Filer City, Filer Township Supervisor, and I don't think I can speak as eloquently as the two gentlemen that preceded me, but they spoke about deliverables and so forth. You know, I'm aware of projects that have been done in Benzy County, some, some outstanding projects, and in Manistee County as well, but I guess I can best speak to Filer Township. And I think the, the first thing that I want to speak about in terms of deliverables, we, about three and a half years ago, through consultants with AES, were put in touch with a gentleman from Big Rapids, an attorney who helped us along with, when you speak about collaboration with the city, revisiting our contract, our sewer agreement with the city, trying to resolve some issues that the township had. And through Eric Williams' help, and, and with the city, we were finally able to sit down at the table, and I think we came up with an agreement that was a win-win for both parties. And, and to me, that's, you know, you talk about collaboration, I think that, that definitely is a good example of collaboration. About a year and a half ago, I was asked by an AES consultant if I would be interested in attending an Explore the Shores informational meeting, and I knew a little bit about it at the time, but not that much, and so I went and attended a number of work sessions and learned more about Explore the Shores. And we were, again, through AES, put in touch with grant writers that helped us to write a grant for the township that is now at the DNR Trust Fund for our Magoon Creek project. Again, I, I have to give AES a lot of credit for their direction and their support on that project. The, another area that, that you've heard discussion on is the US 31 Corridor Project. And again, with the help of AES, consultants from AES, we launched our own US 31 Corridor Project within the township, our business corridor. With assistance and with some funding, we were able to do a charrette, and we, we've got a conceptual plan. And what, the next step that we've taken in that direction now, again, with the help of consultants from AES, we have employed the services of McKenna Associates out of Northville, Michigan, and are now looking at our zoning of the US 31 Corridor, Business Corridor, to look at adopting more of a form-based zoning that hopefully is going to make for easier development for businesses. Looking forward to, to that, of course, after the sewer comes in, hoping that we're going to see that, that interest in the township. So those are just, you know, a few examples in the township. Yeah, I've heard tonight, and I've heard a lot in recent months about the biggest issue, it seems to me, that has come to the forefront with AES is accountability to stakeholders. And from the things I've heard over the last two or three weeks, I think they're moving in the direction, they're taking the steps necessary to address those concerns of accountability to stakeholders. And I, I look for a lot of positive things out of AES in the future, and I just hope that you will consider all of the benefits that can be provided, not just community-wise, community-wide, but in not just our county, in neighboring counties, and really the region. What benefits the city benefits Filer Township, what benefits Filer, benefits the city, what benefits Manistee County, to some extent benefits Benzy County, and so on. So I, I just ask that you give careful consideration, I know you have some big decisions to make. Thank you for your time.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak?
So Tamara Baswinka, Manistee Township. So usually I'm up here to speak to you as a consultant for, whether it's AES or another community, but here, I'm just going to speak to you as a resident of Manistee County and Manistee Township. And I hope whatever you guys discuss today, and decisions that are made in the future about economic development, I think we can all agree that those decisions are made in the best, with the best thought towards prosperity for all of us, especially our youth, that we need to really focus on. So I guess I echo what Terry said and what some others said, that, you know, whatever you decide and whatever your deliberations are, they're going to be as thoughtful and careful as I always see you doing in the work that you do in other areas. And I know in my heart that everybody is here for the same purpose, which is just the betterment of our community. And I guess I just wanted to, to express that to you. So thank you.
The meeting here this evening is billed as economic development, and which I'm in favor of. And it's something Manistee needs and has needed for some time. I caution you all to understand the difference between economic development and community development. Anecdotally, all I know is what I read in the paper, but what we tend to see is community development, and that's good. A lot of times, community development has to take place before economic development can happen. But to me, economic development is payroll and tax base. That's economic development. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? If not, I'd like to welcome the county commissioners. If not, don't care this way. Our subject that we have there is a presentation of the Manistee Area's Chamber of Commerce on the proposed economic development services. So with that, you can work on.
Good evening. I'm Dennis McCarthy, I live in Onakama, Michigan, and I work for Blarney Castle Oil in Bear Lake, and I'm the Board Chair of the Chamber at this point in time. I wanted, I wanted to introduce myself and then my presenters to follow in, I'll come up after that.
My name is Brandon Jensen, I'm the owner of Brightside Design in Manistee, Michigan, multi-generation family that has been born and raised in Manistee, and looking to put down a lot of roots here for longevity in the future. So on behalf of myself and the younger entrepreneurs in the area, I'm excited to be here to present this with you this evening.
Hi, my name is Crystal Young, I'm the Director of the Business Opportunity Center at Westford Community College, as well as a Board Director. And I'm here just in my role of workforce development. I work with economic development organizations throughout the entire state of Michigan, so just to offer a different perspective and answer some questions that may arise.
So I'm not going to, can you hear me without the microphone? Okay. So we prepared a presentation, we're going to tag team this going forward. The blue slides are mine, and the green are Brandon's, and the orange are Crystal's. We've got flyers here for you, if you need them. Who's doing the slides? So I wanted to tell you a little about who we are, what we're doing, why we're here. Thanks.
Hold on, we have a quick question. It is on.
It is on. That's a loose end question that we're making.
There we go. And we're off. Great, thank you. So the Chamber, who are we? We're the largest business organization in the county. We've got 300-plus members that are involved with economic development, job creation, workforce training every day. We've got an existing network out there, as I mentioned, in the area. Over the last two to three years, we've, in one way or another, been working on economic development projects in some form or, or other, and we'll get into those. We do have a focus on business training and business support as part of our charter and what we do day in and day out.
So what is the Chamber looking to do? Essentially, we've outlined that the Manistee Chamber is seeking financial and stakeholder support to build a dynamic, sustainable joint economic development and chamber organization serving the interests of Manistee County, with strong local, regional, and state, federal partnerships and collaboration. So here, I outlined essentially that obviously Manistee County is our focus within the framework of economic development, and then utilizing and leveraging Chamber and other economic development collaborations within our immediate region, which we currently do on a fairly frequent basis with executive directors at other chambers and within, within that green region that you see immediately surrounding Manistee. And we're also a full member of the Michigan, Northern Michigan Chamber Alliance, which is a multi-chamber and economic, joint chamber and economic development collaboration throughout this northern region in Michigan.
Well, the biggest thing about this is you've heard multiple words repeated, and that's collaboration, right? Collaboration, deliverables, accountability, and that's the focus. That's what all of us in all of our work, no matter what it is, we have a purpose, we wish to achieve that purpose. So we're focusing on deliverables and the diversification of funding. So you've heard, anyone who's a business owner knows that when your biggest customer has 80% of your business, you need to diversify your business model in order to be sustainable. This is all about sustainability and long-term thinking. This isn't, let's just do this, because this is what should be done. It's how can we be sustainable, how can we be accountable? The all-inclusive membership base, this isn't just members, this is Manistee County. We're all in this together. Someone mentioned it before, what's good for one is good for the other, not just even in Manistee, but for the region. We're focused on Manistee County and shared administrative resources. Don't reinvent the wheel. If you have someone that's already doing it, let's do it together. That's the big focus, collaboration and achieving the stuff together. Oh, public and private. So in terms of the diversifying funding, the organizations I work with throughout the state, so Governor Snyder placed prosperity regions in our state, there's 10 different prosperity regions. Organically, because Manistee and Mason County fall into two different regional prosperity regions, I deal with two different sets of everything in my work. This is a lot of fun, because there's a lot of collaboration and a lot of ways to see how can we work better together. Across the state, not just in Mason County, but also up north, to the east, to the south, in order to be sustainable, you see organizations, public organizations, speaking not only private funding, or excuse me, public funding, but private funding. And we do already have a lot of private backing secured for this initiative. We've had presentations, conversations. These conversations have been going on long before I got on the Chamber Board, from what I'm told. And Dennis can speak to that, where we have big business, small business, local community members that are asking for certain things to happen. And the Chamber has the organization in place to help elevate some of those initiatives. Do you want to add anything to that? Oh, one, second, second slide. So as I just stated, this isn't something where we're reinventing the wheel. So all across the state of Michigan, this is happening, and not only just the state of Michigan, across the country. So what you're, we're finding, all of you who are in business are recognizing, I can't get people, or I'm having trouble filling these positions, or we have this great idea and we don't have anyone to execute it. So you're seeing, you're seeing groups, you're seeing people that normally didn't work together, starting to figure out, hey, we're going towards the same goal, how do we get there together? How do we talk? How do we have that conversation? Again, back to the collaboration, the end goal, because we all want the same thing. Everyone in this room right now wants the same thing. I've worked with Tamara, I've worked with Kelly, like, we're all on the same goal here. So how can we get there together? And there are many different organizations throughout the state of Michigan that already have the model of economic development and the Chamber working together. You know, there's been conversations where how can you have economic development tied to associations that have membership? They've actually, every single one of those chambers have seen membership increase without being held accountable to it, in terms of, wow, they're, they're moving, they're doing different things for the betterment, not just of members, for the community. I want to be a part of that.
Pam, back at you. So I'll go through these bullet points real quick. A lot of, Crystal covered a lot of this, but, you know, we, we feel that we can provide an organization that's already in place that can get out there and move. And we've, we're focused on businesses, workforce, and economic development, and we, as part of our plan, which I think you all should have received via email, we would hire an Executive Director of Economic Development to focus on it. But as I'm saying, we already have an organization in place, we've got 300 members, we've got contacts in the community. We believe we can raise funds through our existing membership base to cover economic development, which gets to the second point, we want to diversify funding. Currently, the city and the county provide most of the funding to AES. We think there's other sources of funds out there, and we'd like to diversify that and strengthen the cause that way as well. Next slide. And why now? Why are we here? Well, we've, we've been working, we've really been working on this for two years, off and on, we've worked with AES, but we've had a lot of our members and people in the community come to us and say, is there a different way to do this? Can we, can we simplify the process? Does a developer need to go to four different people to come into the community? Can we put it under one roof and streamline, streamline our operations? And this, to us, is a natural arm of what the Chamber does, and as Crystal mentioned, you'll see other chambers in the state have already done this.
So why not? That's, this is an interesting piece, because as, when I came on the Chamber Board, I was the youngest member by, the youngest Board Director by about 15 to 20 years. And I've been sitting on the Chamber Board now for six years. So as I've grown as a small business owner in this community, the Chamber has also made a lot of major changes in my tenure sitting in that seat. So the local Chamber has been establishing and growing business relationships the entire time that I've been in business. I've been in business almost eight years, I've been in, or I've been on the Chamber Board for six years. And at a moment in time, the relationships that I have built as a small business owner is extremely vital to the vitality of my business. If I didn't have them, I wouldn't have a business, as any small business owner in this room can probably attest to. Relationships that you build with people, the connections that you make are extremely pivotal. Chamber has those relationships, and has for a very long time, a very long time. And this isn't just an initiative that's coming from staff or the directors. This is an initiative that has come from our members over a course of many years that say, we want you to be more involved. We want you to be more involved in economic development, you understand the business community. You see us constantly, we interact with you, you help us, you've helped us grow. So it's extremely pivotal that we understand that this is about building about, upon what's already been built for so many years. And those existing businesses, and those existing relationships that are in place are extremely critical to any economic development and to TNR region.
So how will we do it? We've got the organization, as we mentioned, we would have a functioning board size that's smaller, seven to nine people, we've outlined that, we'll outline that board size in another slide. Accountability, accountability is key, Crystal's going to touch on that in a minute, and how we would propose to maintain accountability and... to touch on that in a minute, and how we would propose to maintain accountability and show you how we'll do it. We would also build on the prior successes in the community. We're not here to say that we, we don't think anything good was done. We're here to say there's a little different model to get, to get the work done, and we can continue on with what's already been built and move forward. And then we, we feel like we've got a diverse partnership network out there already with a lot of, a lot of the chambers that we work with, and the Northern Michigan Chamber Alliance, and DTE, a lot of other organizations. And we also feel that diversifying funding is important.
So the structure is one that, again, not reinventing the wheel. So again, in my role at West Shore Community College, I deal with several different economic development corporations. Several of them connected to the Chamber have this model in which there's the president of the Chamber, and then there's two boards. So you have the Chamber Board, you have an Economic Development Board. Now, in the day-to-day, the economic developer seems to go to the president, CEO, because that person's there, that person knows what's going on. There are support mechanisms, they ultimately answer to the board. You have the executive assistant, membership and events coordinator, and then of course consultant. So our goal with this, I mean, people are your most important resource. Our goal with this is to have continuity of projects that are happening, as well as the human component. So I want to reiterate, again, the continuity of projects that are in place, as well as the human employee component.
This just outlines our board, our proposed board structure, which would really be the stakeholders. You know, the city and the county would have one seat each on the board. The private sector would have two to three seats. The Little River Ban of Ottawa Indians would have a seat, somebody from the IDC, and the Manufacturers Council, and the Chamber Board Director. So it's a lean and mean board structure.
So back to the accountability piece, I actually have a couple of examples here of reports. So I have probably enough for, take one of each, so you guys might have different types of reports.
Share, please.
Friendly with your neighbor. There's a, we took the model from The Right Place. Are any of you familiar with The Right Place, Grand Rapids? Anyone? Okay, so The Right Place is the largest nonprofit economic development corporation in the state of Michigan. They are responsible for bringing not just millions, but close to billions of dollars, not just to the Grand Rapids metro area, but to our states. So we are on the fringes of that prosperity region, so we get a lot of support from them. By we, I mean our counties. Whether you know it or not, what's happening in Grand Rapids through The Right Place is affecting Manistee County. They have their, they have their stuff together. So we took a model of the report, the Mason County Growth Alliance took a model of the report. Every single county around us that's connected to The Right Place uses that type of report to talk, to have that accountability proven to stakeholders. So the idea is, is that there's going to be the monthly reports, the board directors. Doesn't everyone just want another monthly meeting? Yes to that. You guys are supposed to laugh, come on. I'm a professional meeting doctor. And then quarterly reports and presentations to stakeholders. So we're in a small community. This is all about relationships. And even in the greater scheme of things, it's not necessarily what you know is who you know. And how do you leverage those different assets? So it's keeping a very close relationship with stakeholders, and of course, then an overall annual report and an accountability review. Like, if this is an employee, if you have an employee at least once a year, hopefully more, you sit down with them and you're like, what are you doing right? What are you doing wrong? How can we get you to that place to do better? That is the goal of this. And ideally, there's no surprises at that annual review, because there's been those conversations and everyone knows what's going on. Back to that communication piece.
So getting into, you know, how we do it. So building on prior successes of economic development that the Chamber has implemented in the past. So we've outlined a few here that is currently ongoing. Business and Career Expo, which has grown and evolved a lot over the, especially the past two and three years, but since its evolution, serving more now as a place for recruitment for employers in our region. Downtown Development Authority and Business Development Committee, Chamber is active in that entity. International Forest Festival, Grace in the River events, as well as supporting other events in the region through promotions, marketing collaborations with the Convention and Visitors Bureau that the Chamber has established and assisted in establishing joint efforts in promotion, when you have local promotion through the Chamber, through our channels, and then in the, throughout the region with the CDB. Manistee County Leadership Program, that's having its third year, or starting its third year. That's probably been one of the more successful pieces that the Chamber has implemented. It's a great program that brings individuals that are, you know, new and experienced in the region, puts them in the same room. There's tours throughout the community at different locations, different days that are focused on specific types of business, different positions in the community, and they all work towards common goals of, you know, a specific project at the end of the year, and has been received with excellent success and acclaim throughout the community thus far. Government Affairs, we have a very active Government Affairs Committee that talks about the issues in the region, reports back to the Chamber Board, but is truly a sounding board in our region to obtain information of, you know, what is happening in our area, bringing that and then filtering it out. So our members understand. So if there's an issue that comes up, for instance, in my line of work, I've obtained continuing that information through that. So that's a huge benefit to me as a Chamber member, but also from an economic development standpoint. It's great to know that there are people that are out there in the state and region doing that work to greater promote the region and educate our business owners on what is available. And then the Northern Michigan Chamber Alliance Partner. We started as not a full partner, but have since become a full partner with the Chamber Alliance. I believe we're in our second year with that initiative. And that's a great networking opportunity, not just for the Chamber, from Chamber to Chamber, but for economic development efforts in the region. A lot of very high-profile projects that are being talked about at the table very frequently, so that's a great way to also just put that connection and collaboration pieces in place.
So, and Governor Snyder made, has made this statement repeatedly, that economic development paired with education equals workforce development. And the biggest issue that you probably hear is, I can't find workers, I can't find good people, I can't, I hear every single day, and it's not just our area, it's across the state, it's across the region, it's across the whole United States, and even up into Canada. It's an issue we're all facing. So there's a lot of these programs already in place. So the Chamber has planned a Developer Day to invite developers in market opportunities available locally. The Relocation Guide, again, it's all about marketing, creating those relationships, and showcasing what we have here. We have trainings and workshops through the college, like, that's your community college. It's here for you. Our job is to serve you. So we hear that need. We are developing programming to help assist and elevate workforce development, not only on an individual level, but a small business and corporate level. We're planning a National Manufacturing Day, so the first week in October is STEM Week. And it's all, you know, we have some major manufacturers in this area, some big players that not only own its playground, but like playgrounds in the backyard, they're all in the global playground. So how do we bring some of that top talent to this area? And how do we then re-keep and retain and grow some of these young people we have locally? You who live here, you have children and grandchildren, you want them to stick around, right? We've got a great place to live. What kind of opportunities can we create for them locally? Micro loan programs, the small businesses who have been, you know, just getting started, or have to buy some equipment, or maybe need a small loan they can't obtain. Programs like that are in the works. And just focusing on Manistee County, how do we elevate Manistee County, but at the same time leverage all the assets and partnerships around us, and again, elevating that collaboration piece.
We're almost done, bear with us. So how would we do it? You know, we've, we've talked to different folks in the room. We've talked to community members and business owners. And so these are some examples of things that are on the table for our community. I can tell you that if we are able to get this funding, you know, the, the agenda of the economic arm, economic development arm would be driven by that board. So those, that team would sit down and say, okay, here are our top five, our top 10 priorities, and we would go after those things. But these are some examples of projects, initiatives, areas of focus in the community that have been brought to our attention. So this is not all-encompassing, but these are things that are important from, from folks that we've talked to. I do want to mention that we would continue to support and be the fiduciary for the county and city grants, whatever's out there. We've done some research on that as well. And we, we can get a 501(c)(3) status for the organization and continue to support those, those programs as well. And I can go through those. You know, one would be redevelopment of targeted vacant and blighted buildings throughout the county, continued discussion and action on rerouting the railroad, expansion of snowmobile ORV trails within the county, support and develop agritourism in the county, continue to support existing development infrastructure projects. Next one, as I mentioned, was be the fiduciary for county and city grants. Housing studies, I know that the city has talked a lot about housing studies and the need for one of those. If that's a priority, that is something we would, we would undertake. And then we would, again, as Crystal mentioned a little bit ago, we would develop and sustain business support services. I do want to go back a little bit. Crystal talked about accountability, and obviously that's a big issue. You know, we were honored with, the Northern Michigan Chamber Alliance about six months ago had a meeting with all the chambers in Michigan, and they highlighted our chamber because we had created a, a document that tracks the value of the spending. So if we have a sponsor that comes to us and says, I want to give you $500 to sponsor an event, we then, after that event is done, we wrap up that event, and we send a one-page summary back to that, that sponsor and say, here's what you got out of your money. And so just as, as early as six months ago, we were noted with about, I think there's six or seven chambers in upper Michigan. So, you know, our, we're run like a business, and we've got to be accountable, and, you know, we're showing that every day.
So partnerships, I think I mentioned previously, everything's about relationships. And there's a list of businesses and organizations we have on there. There's some that are missing. I mean, Baker College is here tonight, they're, they're very much present in Manistee County. We have, again, The Right Place, another located in Grand Rapids. Everything they do affects us in Manistee County. There are multiple organizations that, we don't have to reinvent the wheel, we have the relationship so we can leverage assets that are currently in place, in order to move Mason or Manistee County forward more efficiently and effectively. Because what's good for Manistee is going to be good for all of those touching us and even further. I think that's the biggest thing to hold. It's, these partnerships, we're already in all of them right now. These are very established relationships that I know Stacy or any of the Chamber employees can make a phone call, and even us as board directors can make a call to any one of these organizations and say, hey, what do you think about this? Or do you have a connection here that I don't have? It's a great place to be, good relationships.
So how would we fund this? We've got it, we've got a Chamber due structure. We've talked to other chambers in Michigan that have the same model, and they have been able to, number one, increase their membership, and two, they've been able to generate funding from their members for economic development. Because let's face it, existing business owners in the community probably want, want to see more, more people here, more jobs created, you know, more vibrant, a more vibrant community. We have some private sector funding that we've actually, you know, tentatively talked about. We've got about a third of our budget right now funded from additional sources beyond what we're asking from, from you. We've talked to the Industrial Development Corporation about funding. We've not talked to Manufacturers Council, but we believe that there, there's some funding possibilities there. We've researched public sector funding. The other thing is, we would, we would have to look at fees for services, because, you know, you've got to be able to generate revenue in what you're doing every day. So that's another element of how we would fund ourselves. And then we've also looked at some administrative service contracts with various organizations, which would allow us to leverage our overhead to streamline processes for other organizations and bring some revenue in for the organization. As I mentioned, we would set up a 501(c)(3). We've already done the research. It's not a, it's not a hard process. So we, in that, in that, with that 501(c)(3), we could continue to be the fiduciary and handle any grant work that would need to be done. And again, we could, we could allocate, we could ask our members for allocation for economic development. And what we're asking from you is a 30% reduction in what you're paying now for economic development funding for the city. And those numbers may or may not be exactly right, but we, we pulled those from public documents, the most recent ones we had. So we're asking you for 30%, excuse me, we're asking you for those amounts at a 30% reduction in what you're getting, because we believe in going, we can get funding elsewhere to support everyone's cause. So we'd like to tell everyone thank you. We think this is a healthy discussion in the community. AES has done a great job. We feel like we've got a new organization that can get, hit the, hit the ground running and promote economic development in the county. Thank you.
Does that conclude?
Yep.
Mr. Mayor?
Well, thank you for the presentation to begin with. We now move us to commitment and accomplishments.
I would like to ask if the Chamber has done any research, or can you point any studies in which the increase in your membership is tied directly to the economic development?
I would say it was a study that was on our conversations with the organizations listed on the presentation.
So they're making those assumptions.
We could go ahead and ask them for partake on that.
I think that, I think the point of that was, because this has come up in conversations I've had, having that concern of what's going to happen with members, Chamber members, if they're not happy with someone coming in, the competition aspect of that. And I think the point of that is why it becomes, they have not lost Chamber members, they have gained Chamber members, you know, regardless of, I don't, one, two, three, five, 10, I don't know, but at least they did not shrink their memberships.
I just have to keep going back to, you know, we've made a lot of assumptions on AES over the years. I'm very vocal about the fact that I think the system and we failed that organization. So I don't want to just make decisions based on my best guess. I want some information that's going to help me to make decisions that are good for the long term. We had a lot of discussions about being able to provide accountability to the stockholders, being, making sure that we set our goals properly. You know, I can use the acronyms that I use when I'm developing systems, you know, for the C, you know, you set your goals, you evaluate. You don't evaluate at the end of the year, which is exactly what we said here, which we did, and then at the end of the year, we have a problem. You know, that is the wrong way to manage any kind of contracts, business, whatever, employees, whatever you have. So those type of things still bother me. You know, we set up some expectations, we set some goals, we want to do this, this, and this, very clear about it. So now here we are going, but we're not really sure where those goals are. You know, it's kind of long game. So, so I do have a lot of questions, that it didn't work the way it was running for my own stuff on the county side, with my best guessments, going through our strategic plan, knowing how much I just signed off a $15,000 consultation fee for another strategic plan. So I'm estimating these costs. I could figure out about $75,000 of county money, on the services, just off the top of my head, things that I've seen come out of AES. I don't know, you know, specifically, but about $7,000, $75,000 I can have at our end of that. So again, I keep going back to, what are we looking at here? Do we need to straighten out the organization? Do we need to develop and throw away and try something new? Those are the two options. The, the other thing that I constantly come back to is, what stopped all of these organizations from working in this collaboration before? AES has existed for three or four years. Chamber has been for many years. I mean, in the times that I've been on board here, why haven't we had this building blocks of services? You know, go out, AES, research it, design, planning, all of these things that they're good at, they were doing. Who came in to build on top of that? Nobody. I think some of our residents were very clear about that. There were no outcomes. Nobody picked up the next piece, which is the actual development, bringing them in, setting them up, designing, supporting, reviewing, all of that stuff. So, you know, I, maybe I'm making it too complicated, but I just see a real, you know, systems but I just see a real systems problem here. And I just don't know if one other program's just going to change all that.
Well, I think you're correct. I think we need to reflect on our own actions as boards, whether it's council or county commission, and we probably need to be more active and better players ourselves.
We, as a group of commissioners, did not ask the right questions. If only we asked the right questions, we'd have answered five or six questions. But I do have a question. On your page it says, "How we will do it." You have listed our networks, North West, Michigan Work. Are you already working with them?
Yes.
Then you know the players in Manistee County that are on that board?
I don't personally, but Stacy, our director, does.
Okay. Because I sit on that board.
Okay.
I mean, I just was curious, if it got down to you, what they're doing up there in programs and networks, North West, is, you know...
That Stacy would, and she's on the turn, I think, the other way she needs her. Yeah, she does.
One of the questions that I have, when we're talking about the chamber proposal, since the chamber is a membership organization, what happens if we decide to fund this project in this organization? If there's a controversial project that comes in, and we're talking about dedicating public money to a project that is, you know, we as boards feel is important for the community, but perhaps some of the members of the chamber are opposed to. And what happens in that instance?
This has been a common question that we've researched ourselves. You know, we've got a separate economic development board that the economic developer, development person would report to, along with the president of the organization. That board would chart whatever course they feels is right on economic development. And as you saw earlier, that's a pretty diverse board with who's made up. So they're really, if the chamber board says, "We can't support this project," but the economic development board says they can, then that's how it would go down. So, you know, I can't, I can't project any kind of, can't tell you what's going to happen in the future.
The way that I see it, though, is that the perception is still that the economic development board is connected to the chamber. And I could certainly see some local business people saying, you know, "I'm opposed to," you know, whatever project.
Sure.
That, you know, other organizations and perhaps the city and the county board and the economic development board have determined is good for the community in other ways. I just see that as potentially problematic with that structure. And also, you know, the other piece that I see is that with the funding that you're requesting, the city and the county only receive one seat each. Little River Band has one seat, so there's a minority on that board of public sector, and the rest is private sector on that board. And from my understanding of what the new AES board structure would be, that's quite different.
Okay. And we felt, we feel like that to attract, you know, I think the challenge too, when you have funding that comes up every year, it's hard to, you know, get a commitment from a director. And, you know, we've all seen revolving doors with directors in various capacities in the county. So, you know, what, I think what our model brings is that we've got an organization in place, not centered around a person. It's an organization in place that's, it's got a few more layers to it. So if that person does come in and wants to leave in two years, you know, we can pick up the ball and keep rolling with that, with that ball because we've got some layers of organization there. And so the other thing is, I'm sorry, what was your, okay?
Board structure?
So the board structure. So the other thing is with a private developer or the private business people, we think that's more attractive. Nothing against the government bodies, but we think more outside people are going to want to come in with a board that's private, they've got more private business folks on it. So that might be a big difference, but that's what we feel is important.
Just to kind of piggyback on Margaret's point there, I think you've got $32,000 of chamber funds for your chamber members that can apply to economic development?
No, we don't have any funding. We've not had, made an ask to our chamber members at all.
You're not planning any chamber funds to go into economic development?
We would ask our membership to, they would have an option as a member to, you know, they can renew their membership if they want to support economic development. In addition to that, they could do that.
Okay. And that, going back to Margaret's concern, they could say, "I'm not going to fund this. I don't want to do this project. I'm getting all kinds of my customers saying this is a bad project. I'm losing buildings. I want you to get out of this."
I think, you know, in any community, there's divisive projects, and so I can't, I don't think anybody can stand up here and say...
But it's happened before in other chambers, and I've seen it myself.
The other thing I think you need to, we should share, you know, the chamber membership model is changing from that of membership to that, to more of a sponsor-based, you know, growth. So we don't really, you know, we've got 300-plus members. We're not out knocking doors every day for a membership for 250 people, for $250. We're out developing relationships with larger funders. And so if you look at our key funder base, that's gone up in the last few years. Our membership count is relatively stagnant because you can only get so many people in the community. So, you know, not that the members aren't important, but at the same time, we don't, you know, we're not totally relying upon the two, if we lose five $250 members because of a project that comes in and they're upset with, we're not really, that's not really wagging our tail too much.
But that's still a risk. The funds are a risk. When we're looking at the expression of this area that ran throughout, all kinds of people were saying, "This is a negative project." You don't even see a corrections officer, a piece of huge paperwork.
Sure.
You need a board that's autonomous and can make those tough decisions and have the backbone to stand for these projects. Because every single project will have opposition. Every single project will have opposition. So I think that's...
And we have an autonomous board, and it's a separate board.
Even if it's a separate board, because you've got chambers resigning, and they'll be impacted too.
Well, we've got, we've actually...
You actually have the director too. That's true.
Actually, it's not. We've looked at other models, and it's not uncommon. So, you know, in our presentation, we listed all those counties, Berry County, Mason County, Alpena County.
The chamber director is not...
Okay.
So that's not always the...
But I will also mention, we have put this out in front of our membership. We had a, we've had consistent board meetings on this issue for the last three months, and our chamber board voted unanimously to support our proposal to everyone here in the room. So, you know, this issue came up at a board level as far as, you know, we can't shoot ourselves in the foot and blow our membership up and be a defunct organization in two years. So, you know, there's been some thought put to this. This is not a, this has not been done in a whim. You know, we feel like we can get the ball rolling. You know, if we get an executive director in here that happens to leave in two years, we've got an organization to keep running with it, and we're not stalled out. And so that's where I think the power comes. The other thing is we're streamlining. You look at funding levels, we can streamline some of our services. Instead of the AES calling on funders, we've already got that mailing list. We've got those folks already to go. So from a business standpoint, you know, who, do you want to talk to five different people, or do you want to talk to one person? And so that's how we're looking at it, trying to streamline the efforts. Will there be controversies? I'm not going to sit up here and tell you that there's not. But I think by and large, we could probably all agree that most of our constituents and members of the chamber would probably be pro economic development. There's always going to be a few naysayers, but we can't run our organization based on those naysayers.
I have another question too. Many of the services that you've identified are basic chamber services, but not really the economic development. Economic development is a small business, council, and I think that's a good location for the chamber. But most of what you've listed there, the expos and things, those are the chamber things you typically do. So I'm not seeing a lot of new things in terms of how you're approaching economic development.
Well, I think too, one of the signs I covered was the future. So we have to hire a director. You know, we've got to get somebody focused in that area. Secondly, I heard in the room tonight, we've got to go out, I'm a sales guy. We've got to go find developers. You know, grants are important, studies are important, but at the end of the day, we've got to get people in the community. We've got to reach out to different developers, different business owners in different communities and bring them here. And it might be a developer day that we talked about. It could be, you know, going to other businesses in other parts of the area. And we've talked about networking with the summer folks. They all have businesses downstate. They spend all summer up here. They probably have resources. Maybe they'd love to put a plan up here. Do we know who those folks are? So those are some things that we're going to have to develop. I'm not here to say that we've got the plan ready to go tomorrow, but we would hire that director, and that person's got to go out, in my mind, has got to go and start selling the community. And we've got to focus on grants and infrastructure. I get all that. But if we don't go out and sell and go out in the other 80-some counties in Michigan to tell them who we are, we're going to be talking like this a year from now. So...
Next question is, what is your definition of economic development, and how is that different than what AES is doing?
Well, I think, I think there's a lot of, I don't think there's a lot of differences in what people think of economic development. I think Mr. Terper said it, how did you say? Taxes and jobs?
Yes.
Okay. So I would define it that way. That's a simplistic way. But then there's, you know, there's workforce training, there's recruitment. There's a lot of facets to it. So I don't pretend to sit here and say that we, I've got it all figured out. But that's where that board comes in to say, "Hey, here's what's important to our community in the county, and here's what we got to go after."
Discussions have been had in the past between the chamber and other area organizations. The term economic development and what that means, you've got 10 people at economic development, means you're sure to get 10 different answers. And that seems to be a constant across everybody. There's economic development as it relates to business improvement, retention, training, existing business economic development in place, going and advancing business, especially in the fields of housing. Housing has been identified as a huge need in our region, not just Manistee County, Mason County, Benzie, Wexford, Oceana. I mean, all of our surrounding region, housing is a critical need. And so many people think, okay, economic development has to come from the outside. Well, economic development can happen within the existing business community. There's a lot of existing businesses that want and have a longing to grow in a certain capacity. The advantage of having a chamber connected to an economic development entity is the fact that it already has access, it's in a conduit already, of individuals, business owners that do want to grow, but may not know exactly how to get to that next step. So it's economic development from securing funding, securing the big ideas, and then down to what some of the comments were tonight from the public is, okay, what is the process of getting this done, and how is it going to get done? That's one area of economic development that the chamber feels that it does have infrastructure in place and resources in place that can greatly assist in the growth of economic development, if that is your definition in this specific region.
Well, the good news I had is that economic development, what you're talking about, is being done by AES. Matter of fact, your list of projects that you're going to work on, AES has been working on it for years. They were doing spendings two, three years ago. They've assisted in a lot of different areas in terms of both community development and economic development. And in this world, if you don't have a community development, you're not going to see much economic. Because where's the housing for people, and where's the labor for the businesses? So they've been doing that for years. Matter of fact, they're doing an enhancement now, and bringing on a new executive director too, which will help for you with smoother operation.
For my own self, you know, I, my personal experience with this small business owner in this community, my experiences with the chamber was really not that good. I have been very impressed in chamber and what it's been happening these last several years with its leadership and the direction that he was taking. We've taken something that struggled, and I do believe strongly it's a great job, and people have trust in it, and people, as you say, are willing to sign up and participate, be part of that. I worry though that we may, you know, I keep, again, systems and macro in my book. I think of the community, our community, and what the chamber offers and that micro scope, you know, that micro approach to it. And you cultivate these businesses, and you help them grow, and you're doing our workforce, and all of that's great. But I also see what Mark was saying in regards to the larger picture, our community, our country, and what we have to do there. You know, we have a lot of planning that needs even happen before we can even say we're ready for, we're ready for that big factory to be out and up. Because now we have to take some, you know, the customer doesn't even have good wine on them. So just put the factory out there, and then, yeah. So these are the things that we're trying to do with reports that we've seen, is having that integrated ability to see all these things at once. And that's why I just keep coming back to, I love what the chamber's doing. I've been so impressed. But are you the second step? I don't know. I mean, if that's right inside your door, will you be able to literally delineate the roles? Will you get a hold that that day and say, "No, this has to happen first before we go to that side"? I don't know. I'm worried about that. I'm a conflict of interest, I guess.
And I hear that, and I think that's why you have a separate board to put that direction out there. I mean, that's an important piece, and that board's got to set the agenda and hold that person accountable as a economic development person.
Well, a lot of the discussion that's been had at the chamber with the board and staff, with the, I would say, the regional partners, the chambers who have success in doing this. I mean, there's been a lot of discussion of, you know, some very macro ideas and micro ideas, because it is. I mean, you're, you gain access, you gain a conduit, which you also gain almost too much, if not necessarily too much connectivity, but there can be issues when you have someone that needs to stay at 50,000 feet, getting drugged down to the 10,000-foot level at very rapid paces that can affect the overall overarching goal. So I think part of the dynamic at play with the chamber was restructuring some aspects of the chamber that, to your, you know, point where you've seen, and I can speak for all the chamber board members, appreciate to hear that with the groundwork that's been done with the board directors, but establishing those players and positions, and not just positions by the person in the business interest, but the role of what that working director is. And I consider all of us as chamber directors as working directors. We don't just attend a meeting once a month, and that's just our seat on the chamber board. So that same model with the assistance and sort of guidance of some of the other regional players, like Mason County, Bill Williams, like Berry County, Flint, Alpena, that has, you know, we're not, this isn't a new concept, and we're not a volunteer, I guess, is what I'm, is what I'm trying to get at.
Could you walk me through a success story to some of these other members?
Berry County, so Travis...
Talking Travis Alden, yeah.
We used to be at the boat, correct?
Was he the director here in Manistee originally, when they, I believe, in the human industry?
So part of the regional prosperity initiatives, Region 4, we actually have a partners meeting. So every economic development director from the 13 counties in Region 4, which is Mason, Lake, Oceana, Wego, and everything down to Berry, Neat, once every other month. And everyone shares success stories, trials. And unfortunately, I don't have in my memory a specific story for you. I can get you one, because Travis is killing it down there right now. And he is actually the one, I think, that Stacy initially talked to. After we, after the chamber was approached, again, this is not, we're not standing up here saying, "Hey, we, you know, we're wanting to do this because we think it's right." It was asked of us by multiple members, both members of the community and non-members of the chamber. Like, there's a need. It's not us versus them. Again, we are all in this room and this together. And so it's not this person's doing it, this person's not, the organization is. We're just here presenting a solution to what was presented to us as a need. And I can get you, I'll find a specific story for you.
Where I'm trying to go with that is I'm having trouble to visualize in my mind how you start off, being the only contact, one contact person, to the AES.
So I think, so I have multiple stories of non-successes. Because let's say someone comes in, they have a great conversation here with Ms. Pontiac. Ms. Pontiac's like, "Oh yeah, I can pass you on to Ms. Goodman." Ms. Goodman's on a town on vacation. So that person's trying to get a hold of that individual. She comes back, she calls, and we get a hold of him, he's dropped off the radar, right? That person comes back, and it's like, there's so many different entities doing the same thing. You have that dreaded word called silos. And so it's eliminating the silos and again, creating efficiencies. Because we are all have a ton on our plate, we all wear many hats. Brandon had a joke like, "You should come in with 10 different hats and illustrate all the things, everything, everyone does." How do you streamline that? You have Ms. Pontiac be accountable rather than just pass along the line if that person gets lost or frustrated with the system.
That's exactly what I want to see how it works. I want to see a story.
And you know what? If it falls off down here, that's still on Ms. Pontiac. That's the accountability piece. You have one person, one organization, one system. Whereas something goes wrong, I know right who I can go to. That is eliminating and shoring up those holes in the net.
I have some comments. And I expressed those at the meeting this afternoon. It's a little bit like what Margaret had expressed, but in much broader way. My concern with AES, and I think they... My concern with AES, and I think they've done some great stuff, and they're really, they're really coming to the table now, some concrete suggestions on how to change. And I appreciate all the work that they've done in that area. My bottom line concern that I still struggle with is if you're the executive director of three counties, and you can run a developer coming in, and, and he sees, he sees strengths in all three counties. Let's say that it goes to Wesford instead of Manistee, or to Benzie instead of Manistee. That's not really what I would like to see necessarily. And I think a lot of people who are residents within this county may have some issues with that. It seems like we're really individualized in our own counties. And not to say that we don't have a lot of synergy with these other counties surrounding us, but I think it's a concern. So, I just, that is, that is one problem that I have looking at AES. And I, and I just, it's my one negative that I keep coming back to. As far as everything else that AES is trying to accomplish, I find with, I, I love the direction, the new direction that they're trying to take. But I think I'm really, really identifying with your 300 membership, Chamber members, who are already business, or trying to do this. So I, I am interested in maybe trying to analyze this a little bit deeper. So if we need some more examples, like Roger has suggested.
And we can get those to you.
To build, to build on the idea that you, that was mentioned about the member organization, and if there is an economic development project that will adversely affect a handful of other members. There are situations in the past, with my tenure on the Chamber Board, where a specific contract was awarded to a specific member, and the other members were angry. And some left the Chamber because of it. Many of them have since rejoined the Chamber, but ultimately, the Chamber isn't just one or a handful of members. And that is the sentiment that we keep getting from a lot of the members that we talk to, is that we are better as a collective whole than one individual entity. Is there an economic development project of any kind, whether this is tied in with Chamber or not, that the Chamber may have to take a stance on because of very opinionated members, potentially? The press would potentially be the same, in terms of the Chamber comes out in opposition to this because it's going to adversely affect these 15 members. The Chamber believes in the county as a whole. Echoing what Crystal said multiple times, we in this entire room want the same thing, and same things for our region, and Manistee County. It really is not just, you know, what is, what if we make this handful of members angry? I mean, working with the other businesses that I do professionally, if there's a lodging property that is being solicited to come in, immediate response is, how do the other lodging properties feel? Because their ADR, their revenue, that could take a hit. Well, depending on the caliber of that property, it's been shown that ADR goes up, which is average daily rate. So by this new business coming in that is an identified need to our region, starting with a negative or a zero in adding to it, has been shown as a benefit in a lot of different business examples. Now, do I have the data all with me, you know, but is that something that we can obtain and show examples, like, like you had mentioned of, you know, wanting to know more information about that? I mean, that's certainly something that we can look at. But the, the fact is, is that the Chamber isn't just serving a handful of members in its current membership structure. And, you know, similar to your point with, you know, economic development regionally, you know, the issue of what happens if, you know, a project goes here instead of here, how do the other counties feel? It's almost like having three members, you know, in that same different dynamic. And that dynamic has to be, you know, is, to the point that was made here, the, the board and the vision and the mission need to be strong so they support that this is the position of this group moving forward. Because we understand, based on the information that in front of us, that this is the greatest option for the collective whole.
I'm kind of a worrier. Sometimes I worry about structures, the way things are put together. And maybe unnecessarily. I look at your organization, the structure chart, and it looks like the Chamber and this director, the board, the directors for the all answer to the president or the CEO. So they're both answering to this one person. Does that one person then make a decision which way things go?
No, the board, I mean, the, right now, the, in the Chamber organization, we have that person reports to the board, and the board sets the agenda and the policy for the president to execute.
Why do they fall under the president's security?
These are the two boards here.
There's two boards, there's two separate boards.
But they all coming back to this person?
Yep, but that.
They're over the top.
So the economic development person reports to the economic development board, they set the agenda, and then there's, I guess, for intents and purposes, a collaborative, collaborative relationship between the economic development director and the president, and there's an employee, a manager employee relationship there. But ultimately, that person is directed by the, the economic development board.
So both boards are independent?
Yes.
Yeah. What about the management? I mean, the boards are independent anyways, so if AES has an independent board, what about the Chamber management for AES?
I mean, I, I don't know that that's unreasonable, and that, you know, I don't know, I think you'd have to sit down and work through that.
I guess to, to throw something against the wall in regards to that, Karen, I guess, what's the relevance of what they call, I mean, if it's the same function, where's the difference?
We can't rattle faster if we have a management agreement compared to joining these, we'll be able to put it in one structure. So if we had to evaluate for a year and look at this to make sure that it's right, a management agreement could be enough.
I think the other point I'd like to make though, too, is we're out chasing diversity in funding as well. So, again, not that, you know, that way we can be independent, and that's not uncommon in different counties. I mean, they've got totally different funding sources beyond the city and the county. So, you know, that, that I think is where our strength would lie as well. We're able to not have to come and beg for funding every year. I mean, that, you know, not that it's not, it's important to get the funding, but if we're not 100% funded here, then, you know, we can stay on our own a little bit.
So the Chamber is all looking for funding?
Yep.
What about the board, the economic development?
As far as, I'm sorry.
The economic board, what's that board doing?
That's not created. That's, that's not, it's really dependent upon your, your decision. You know, that's not, that's not operating at this point, so.
I've heard a lot of different things said here. Mr. Walker was absolutely right, you know, what's, what's good for a township is good for the city. And what's good for the city is good for the township, and that applies universally around the county. But then I have some things that I have questions about, maybe you can address this, maybe you can't. Membership retention. How, how many businesses are there in, in Manistee County? And how many of those businesses are members of the Chamber? Because you called this a presentation, but I also look at it kind of as an interview, an audition. You know, we're looking for answers and, and direction. So, you know, I wonder, how well do you do with the existing audience that is here in the county? And, and then I wonder about the diversity throughout the county. You know, is, is my chair of your membership, the city of Manistee, and the townships? Or, or are we in Thompsonville? Or are we in Walton? Or are we in some of the other smaller communities around here that also have business entities that, that put your retention there? Then, then we're stagnant growth. You know, is, is... It, it just brings questions to mind for me. Why, why is the growth stagnant? I mean, if you're doing a wonderful job as a Chamber, and the Chamber people are, are embracing this and endorsing that, you, you would think people that are not members would be more than willing to become members and participate in it. Now, I'm gonna tell you personally, I don't go to the Chamber after hours, because it conflicts with another meeting that I have. And, you know what I mean, there are, there are some of those things that get in the way of, of participation in some of these events. But, you know, you know how many businesses there are? I mean, we, Mr. Lepin came on board, and one of the first things we started doing was inventorying all of the downtown development aspects. You know, how many stores do we have, and how many employees do we have? And then how many residents do we have living over businesses and stuff? If you don't know where you're at, you don't know if you've lost or gained, or where you wanna go in the future. So, I look for some of those numbers. You don't happen to have a little wits of it?
I, I don't know if you know, I don't know the number of businesses in the county. I know Stacy knows.
Right.
I don't know that. What I can say is that we're, you know, we're 300 members, our membership base does continue to grow. When I say is, if I use the word stagnant, it's one of those things where you're not, not, you can sit in the rooms, they wanna pick off 50 members next year. That process is difficult at times. So what we, what we tend to focus on is programming. And those programs bring different sources of revenue into the Chamber, non-membership based revenues, so we're diversifying our, our revenue that way. And then ideally, what happens is as you build these programs, you get the memberships in. So it's, versus 10 years ago, you might have been knocking on doors to get a $150 membership. And that, that can be costly to do. So, you know, the, the approach is to build programming around that. But I need the numbers.
And you know, I've heard some other things, you know, competition. 18 months ago, Conker the Fillmore in, in a business model, you have a coffee shop? We don't have enough coffee shops in town. You know, Fillmore has thrived. Other businesses have not suffered in, in growing out of business, or they, they probably thrive along with them. It's a completely different niche and clientele that, that they're serving. And we came online with redevelopment liquor licenses for downtown, in, in the downtown district. My first concern was, oh my goodness, you know, people, people that have full fledged liquor licenses now will be concerned about that. And I went around and talked to those business owners. Bring it on, they said. You know, we, we have loved the competition because we put a little money on our facility and, and we'll keep, if not grow our clientele. So, I think, I think sometimes adding a like function or business, moving spirit, just went to high-end butcher products. Not compete with Myers, not compete with, with other places, but high-end stuff, the business available on places. And, and people continue to look to expand, as you said, their, their business range and clientele that they serve, are increased around, so. Those things are impressive.
I can tell you due to, our membership is, we talk, we kind of, we kind of jokingly call it Al County, but we've got a broad base of members outside of the city of Manistee. We had outreach just in Calhoun last week for our business after hours. We had a morning breakfast session for Chamber members outside of the city perimeter, you can call it. So, our board is, they're looking to maybe make up that way. So we've got to get some folks that are working in the city, and folks that are living and working out in the Al County area. So that is something that we're very aware of as far as outreach within our Chamber membership.
Dennis, I know it's been discussed at great length at the board level. Have you talked to membership, have you had much feedback from your membership in regard to trying to go down this path?
So two weeks ago, we met as a board and approved our proposal. And then we communicated to our membership the next day, and had had zero negative feedback. We had three to four emails back, so I can't say it's 25 emails, but to be frank, it's three to four emails that come back from various community members, Chamber members that say, hey, we support you, this makes sense.
And I, I personally have had impromptu discussions with probably 10 to 20 different Chamber members. So I'm kind of located right down in Manistee, right on Brewer Street downtown, so, I mean, I've got clients down there, I go in, I tell them, hey, they'll ask me what's going on. I ask them what's going on, 10 minute conversation turns into about 45 minutes. So, you know, and, and this has been a topic of discussion. And, and again, this isn't just a topic of discussion that's happened as a way, this has been a discussion that the Chamber, like, for probably about two years, talking about expanding programming specifically for our businesses as a real estate company, based on finding that they are running this with feedback from some existing programs, like some of those other leadership programs, where people are coming up saying, hey, can you do more of this? You seem like a place that should, how is this, you have the resources, you have the connections. So, to the point about, you know, how the member, or how the membership community feels about it. The ones that I have talked to personally feel that it's a logical pick. We're talking about business development, business recruitment specifically, because we're tired of this, so. So on those points, the membership is helping.
So it's one of the points that I wanted to make also. I think that the Chamber has been showing a lot of checks and work, especially the last few years. I can say that as a small business person, I've been to Chamber for a past, and I've actually dropped my membership. Because I've been really concerned in the past, and I've been trying to say, it's really nice that Chamber's the last couple of years. So that's definitely positive. I think what you're presenting this evening really addresses one of the pieces that we've been talking about at the county level, which is having, we discussed this with AES, we discussed this in board meetings as a whole, about having a single contact person for developers, for business people, to be able to talk if when they come in to the area and be able to guide them through that process. That's something we're discussing ongoing. However, I think a couple of things with AES. There have been some organizational issues that we've been having for a long time. We've asked them to address those. From everything I've seen so far, it sounds like they've been doing a great job of doing the best with the rest of the issues and the rest that they're doing for us. And the pieces that they've been doing a really good job with are the community development work, and also securing tremendous amount of grant funding, millions and millions of dollars of grant funding for areas of the county. And that money doesn't directly benefit the county, it benefits the people in the different communities. So, my view is that what AES is doing, I would like to give them an opportunity to continue with that. And if we want to have discussion, I think Karen, you brought to a good point about having a management agreement perhaps. We're also talking about a new organization, a new organizational structure of the Chamber. And consider the possibility of something that a management agreement for that, not a development. I think that's something we need to explore.
I've just got something to say. I was a Chamber man, a member of that, I hear years ago, I think McKinnon did have been president at that time. I saw the big shape and enthusiasm that the three of you have. And I hope that whatever happens as a result of tonight, that you keep growing that Chamber, because you are all leaders in this community, and I really appreciate you.
All I can, all I can add to that following, because I do sit on that since, is Kate, the board is, I am, head modestly.
Yes, they are. Is there a plan B that, you know, I, I, if, if maybe this doesn't work out the way you want? Do you think you're having to stop, or are you gonna continue to maybe evolve?
Well, I think we, you know, we're, we're not here because we wanna be divisive. But I think we, we research this, we look at a different model. I, I don't know that it's drastically different than, you know, if it is. I look at the type of person there that you think they are. I think we have to find new people, you know, I think if you have a more streamlined, I mean, I mean, you know, when I look at our organization, when I work, you know, if I can attract good people and keep them here, that's what I'm trying to do. And I think when you can diversify your funding sources, and you can streamline your operations to be able to pay somebody a little more, you know, you can secure, you can say, you know, I'm hiring you, and I don't have, there's not a year of your funding in there, there's not a management agreement. I think you're gonna get more trash, and I think, so, I'm sorry, you may have it valid. But I believe if you get a good dynamic organization, good leadership, you're gonna work through those things. We'll be having controversies with a project, probably will. I just, I believe that, you know, with a less dynamic organization, first of all, with silos, and, you know, I don't think silos are always intended. I think we have, if you have a restaurant or that's, that, I own the pizzeria, he's got the burkini bar next to him, they're separate owners. You know, we're not, it's just, it's hard to work. You know, you get two different licenses. So, I just really believe that, that streamlined organization is gonna allow you to attract better people, and diversify funding. If I want to move my family up to Manistee County, and I interview the job, dash from up a place, and they say, "Well, it's a one-year management agreement." Am I going to truck my family up here for a one-year management agreement, knowing that the city council might change, you know, in the next election, the county might change next election? So, that's where diversity funding comes into play, because I don't think we can attract. We can get good people, but, you know, we might turn them over sooner rather than later. And I think that's one of the things I'm taking back on this.
Well, I had mentioned when I was talking about, you know, I came on in Chamber Board relatively early on in my business, and the relationships that I've established, and the relationships that the Chamber established in that tenure, I think is really vital to the success of the Chamber, why there has been a great upward trajectory in the Chamber as of the recent past three years. And I've been in Manistee, I grew up here, I've seen administration turnover, and every time I see administration turnover, there's that learning curve, and that learning curve takes time, and understanding the relationships and the dynamics of local policy and government, and how something can get done. Because that seems to be what, how a lot of this started, our own membership base, is we, let's see it get done. You guys have been here, you guys have been doing it, when they're speaking on behalf of the Chamber. They recognize the fact that the similar faces are in play that have been there for a while, they trust them, and they retain that element of trust. And that's extremely important, especially when you're talking about developers and trying to recruit businesses here. And these are all important aspects of any economic development division. And the definition of economic development is extremely vast and extremely wide. Like I said, I think everyone has their own spin on it and their own kind of idea of what it is. But that longevity of the person in place and the right people in place is so critical. Especially the town our socks. And we have a community, and this, I'm not talking about just Manistee, I'm not talking about just Manistee County, I'm talking about our entire region, north of Grand Rapids, south of Traverse City, that's us. You know, and in that area, it's hard to find attractive positions where you're going to have longevity and workforce, and there's very few positions that are like that. So, those individuals that you can have diverse funding sources for and create longevity in those positions, they can build relationships and become part of the networking groups that are attracting developers, that's so critical. And that's really what we want to try to be a part of, because our membership building is that's a critical part of the economic development equation using money for directors who are our current staff. So, that's, we just want, again, accountability, sustainability, with really sustainability not being played, you know, next to accountability, they're two very extremely important pieces we put side by side, especially in that framework relationship.
I just want to say one thing. With our board and probably the city also, you have a diverse tier, and we're all in different committees. And the more you talk, I can think about committees that I sit on, that could be an asset to AES and yourselves, and the other board members are the same. And if you can offer any help to either group, ask us.
There's been a lot of good conversations tonight, and the thing I got to say is, either it be AES that takes that next step with the county or the board. Each of those, either one, has to work with the county and the city and all the underlying communities. Rather than working as islands, we have to bring them together and make a county. So, we're going to make this thing grow and bring economic development to Manistee County. Rather have people coming into the county and having our workers go up.
Before we get out on behalf of the commissioners and the council, thank you for coming and making your presentation. I thank all the visitors that are here, who want to comment, and that goes. Appreciate it. Leave a quote with Mr. Taylor. What's happening, Mr. Seaver, on the Pennsylvania market for AES?
We can, yes, we're going to add it there instead of the next council meeting, yes.
So, we have a more thorough discussion on that, and we have a possible decision from the city shortly thereafter. We want to allow an opportunity for a robust discussion. Let this settle a little bit, maybe if people have questions, or if there's certain directions to the Chamber's point on that.
Yeah, excuse me, Mayor, I'd like to put my two fingers where it's working on. All of the county commissioners, you've got to contact folks from AES, Chamber. Please, whatever questions arise, reach out to them, talk to them. We need to make a decision on if we're going to support economic development in the county. We've got to decide, are we going to go continue with AES, with the new format? Are we going to head towards the Chamber? We need to make a decision, people have to move on, so.
Jeff, can I just add too? I appreciate everything. I know most of those people, I don't know if you want to apologize. And Crystal's absolutely right, we're all here for the same reason. It feels a little bit like parallel play, what we're trying to replicate, and so, that's not a, I'm not trying to diss anything, because Stacy's awesome. It is about people, and it is about relationships. And so, I believe, I'm a gambler, that's why I love Manistee. We're going to take a leap of faith, and we're going to start Lisa on Monday. And I think that her ability to begin that relationship building, even with the Chamber, she may have to go visit Stacy at home with a new baby, but hey, I think she can do it. I think that what we need to do is come together. I understand all of the issues with having it under the Chamber, not in the Chamber, but I think at the end of the day, we all just need to work together. And so, that's what's going to get economic development and propel it forward for this county and for this region. And so, I appreciate what the Chamber presented tonight, and I think that you will see, starting Monday, that Lisa will hit the ground running and be very collegial with everybody. So, looking forward to that. And look forward to seeing, October term is city and county?
No, city. We don't meet till the 24th of October.
Is that when you...
And if we need, if we need to have a special meeting, we can do that.
Okay. Well, I'm taking a leap of faith, Jeff, so I leave it to you. Okay? Thank you.
Yes, yes.